Good afternoon. Welcome to council time this Wednesday, February 5th, 2025. We'll start with the roll call.
Counselor Young.
Here.
Counselor Fuentes.
Here.
Counselor Little. And Chair Marshall.
Here. And just to note, Counselor Belkot is excused. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Chair. I would like to ask the council to amend the agenda to add two additional executive sessions. The first one would be number 9.3, pending litigation, 15 minutes with potential after action. And the second one of 9.4, pending litigation, 15 minutes, no after action.
And what's the RCW? Or is there one?
I think it's the same one that's on the agenda for potential, the 4230-1101I.
Okay, thank you. That's added. Then going on to public comment on agenda items only.
We have Carmen De Leon.
Come right up, Carmen.
Hello, my name is Carmen De Leon. And so I'm talking in regards to the minutes of January 29th. And I imagine it's all day minutes because there was a session of, with this lady Vanessa Gaston. And she talked about a bunch of money and the fact that there's a shortfall in the homeless funds. And I'm like, how did that happen? Because I know Vancouver talked about having 15 million allotted. So where did that go? And I'm just saying, I did the math because she said that they maintain 94 beds at the cost of 3.5 million. And like I've said before, that's 94 people who have proven themselves incompetent. If you put them on SSI, the price per year would be 1.28000 million, so less than half. And how do you make these people on disability sustain themselves like myself? I have my kids to help me, but other people, there's Oxford Houses that you have to be sober in, and Habitat for Humanity, which you know is for, to help people because we already know people can't live off minimum wage or whatever. And the price of SSI is minimum. So in order to help these people, you would actually be doing them a favor by putting them on SSI, cutting all this red tape because 94 beds, I did the math, you can do the math. I mean, if they, even if they got the minimum amount on SSI, they could still sustain themselves cheaper than all this 3.5 billion for just 94 beds. I mean, you could really re-educate them instead of main, you know, putting a Band-Aid on it, make them real solution, which is you can sustain yourself, be clean and sober. Yeah, we know you can't afford a one-bedroom apartment, but you can afford Oxford Living. I know they've been in business for at least 20 or 30 years. If you don't know what that is, you should find out. Oxford Houses and Habitat for Humanity. And I'm just saying, when you've been given $5 million for the opioid problem, how is there any shortfalls? Because even when I looked at the homelessness in Vancouver, they said the average was 600 people. 5 million definitely covers that because out of 600 homeless, you know, chronically homeless people that they're dealing with, not everybody's an addict. Some of them have been priced into homelessness. You know, they've just been, they can't afford it. They can try and hold down a job and, and you know, my kid had three different jobs, still trying to pay $1,700 a month rent. And all that did was drive him crazy because it's unsustainable. You know, I mean, that's why I'm saying, and she talked about the legislator. And yeah, you need to pay attention because I mean, I do think that you have a say in all the cities here to make them not sanctuary cities and help the police deport people who don't belong in this country. I'm just saying.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone online?
We have one person online.
Okay, go ahead.
Caller, you've been unmuted. Please go ahead with your comments.
Good afternoon. Kimberly Gohean Albin, live citizen of Clark County, Washington, USA. Well, I'm feeling a lot better than yesterday, that's for sure. I'm driving back with a friend from Olympia. We went up and did some, you know, actually education of our own self. We went up for the insurance on gun rights. So we're going to be, you know, real active in that. I ask other public people to do the same. So on the minutes of, that you're going to be passing today, it was, there was speaking about the Dabler Forest sale. So I would like a little update on that. I know that there's some flyers around that people can sign and let them know that. Probably some stuff on Facebook and all that. Also, I see that, well, you're going to go into your RCW 4230-110. So I would like to know what all of these are about. I know there's certain things you can't say, but how can the citizens know what you're saying or not saying? How do we know that you're not saying things that you're not supposed to be saying in an executive session? So maybe somebody could, you know, answer my question on that so we can be held accountable and, you know, hold you guys accountable too for doing the job that is the people's business there, right? Then also, there's stuff about federal cutting. So we know that there's going to be some federal cuts. I'm going to tell this council, you cannot cut anything that has to do with public service or public safety. We're sick and tired of this, you guys. You know, you've used hard-earned tax dollars and you know you've overspent, and we're going to find those out. But, and I think you guys are squirming too. But what, what we need to do is cut the local government, the big government that's there. You are not going to cut out public services or public safety of any sort. We're going to be able to house our veterans. We're going to have our police, our fire department, and our EMTs out there in full force. I don't care what you guys have to spend on, but those are public services. You did not hold to those last four years of having public safety as number one priority. You've admitted that. It's been laughed, and we're going to get it back up first. You guys are going to quit being selfish with our monies, and you're going to continue with our public service and our public safety. That's your job, or I will read out of the Constitution that we can recall you. And I'm, I think people are going to be ready for this. So you might sleep well tonight and everything's all hunky-dory, but there does come a day.
Thank you. Your time is up. Anyone else? Okay, that concludes public comment. Onto old business. We just have one item here. Approval of the minutes of January 29th, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. I have one small correction under Counselor Reports. The first line there, Eric Lamb, it should be a B, Lambert, not Lamb, Pert. So just one small correction. Any other corrections or comments on the minute? Hearing none. All those in favors say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, thank you. Minutes approved. New business.
Today.
No new business. Counselor Reports. I have something I'd like to mention. I think we've all received some communications from the community related to Camp Bonneville. And I was wondering, since, you know, we're still negotiating with the various entities that use that, that are using that site now, if there could be a pause on their use of that activity until we get those contracts or framework for how they are to use the site, until we have an opportunity for the council to deliberate on that. Is that something we could, or are other counselors interested in that?
I am. I think it would be a good idea to put a pause on any activity until we can make the determination of who we're going to renegotiate with and what the use will be.
I'd like to learn more as well.
You'd like to learn more?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I would like to learn more as well. One of the things that we need to keep in consideration is if we put a pause, essentially we're ending contracts. Is that correct?
So we have, so two, two things on what Chair Marshall just said. One, we've paused one of the entities already. Two, FBI, we're talking about, I mentioned that last week, we're talking to them on the 6th. Then we'll know kind of what the last steps of the contract negotiations is with FBI. So that's the update for them. The ATF was under a contract that the sheriff had done years ago. We are talking to them as well, but the sheriff's the other part. They have to certify three times a year. I am reluctant to just put a hard pause on that right now until we know what the FBI conversation's going to come up with on the 6th. What I would propose is if I come back next week and give council an update during council time, if Kathleen's okay with adding an update that I can give in the policy updates or something like that about what that conversation has come up with, I won't know that until the staff meet on the 6th with that.
Thank you. That sounds like a good path forward. One question related to the sheriff. Do we know what the timing is for that certification? Is that something coming up soon?
Yeah, so they typically have to qualify four times a year. So they have to run their whole entire staff, and of course, that's overtime and everything that they have to do. And they, they do their training, and that's required for their certification. So I'm reluctant just to say today, we're pausing everything, not knowing the ramifications that will be for their staffing. And they, they schedule that way far in advance. So instead of, I would like to talk to them before we go down that path. And if we can do that next week after we have a little bit more information from the FBI, I would greatly appreciate it.
But just to be clear, the FBI continues to use the facilities. And if I recall correctly, their, the use of the facility was expired some time ago, correct?
The use of the facility has expired in the, in the contract, but we've been negotiating for quite some time. So that is how we've kind of went forward with that particular contract. So that, that contract is expired, but we've been negotiating for quite some time with them since last year on this, on the new contract. And then that comes back to council for approval and consideration because that's something, as I mentioned with the ATF and the sheriff, years ago, the sheriff, you know, went into these agreements. The council is the authority that goes in agreements with any other outside agencies. So we would need that to come back to council. So all those will come back for your consideration and approval. My concern is the sheriff's office.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. And with the, with the existing, well, the expired agreement, is that, do we continue with whatever sidebars there are with that until we get a new one?
We've continued with their, their prior use of how they've used the site. And I will say, and I know that I've mentioned this to most of you individually, the FBI is really good about asking for permission if they want to use something outside of the range. That usually goes to our staff and public works. So they've been a good tenant for us out there. So I would just say that our conversations with them, they've continued the use that is underneath the expired agreement. Kevin, am I missing anything since you're in the audience?
I think that sums it up pretty well.
Okay.
Okay, good summation. That sounds like a good path forward.
Counselor Little has a hand up. So I just want to make sure I'm not missing something that he would like to share.
Down here. Go ahead, Counselor Little.
Yeah, I think this is a great plan to get some more information next week. As part of that, I'd just like to learn a little bit more about what payments, revenue we've received through these contracts, including FBI, and if we're still receiving payments or no payments for their use. And then, and just a little bit about these uses and how they'll, how they're compatible with like the conservation conveyance. Like to know a little history about the different uses and how they, you know, they're compatible with the agreement that we have.
I can bring, oh, go ahead, Kathleen, sorry.
No, I was going to say, we've had this, great questions. We've heard them before. And I believe all of those answers are on our FAQs on the Camp Bonneville website. So I will forward that just to all council. There is also a good background on there. And I guess my other question, I think it was Counselor Fuentes maybe, or Counselor Young, I'm not, I, my memory's a little short today. But with, I don't know if it was said about direction or more information. If we can get some clarity on that to make sure we're addressing items for you all. Because right now, the direction's been the same. It's not about future use. Right now, it's about cleanup, compliance, the public participation process, which is not the county. It's the Department of Ecology. And then, like Amber said, negotiating the FBI contract. We don't have to have one with the sheriff's office because they're a county entity, but I know that there was a desire to move forward with that as well. So there's been no decision on long-term uses because right now, we got to get the cleanup done and make sure that that's done and in compliance. So is there other information that you're seeking that we can bring back to you next week?
I think for me, I was interested in what is current, what the current uses are related to ATF and the sheriff.
The four entities listed in the memo that we talked about.
Yes, I can update on that. And then I believe that we, we will be making decisions about those uses going forward. So that was my focus. Counselor Little?
Yeah, I agree. And just like the shooting range, just want to hear verbally how it is. I know there's a lot of stuff online, but also for the public, I'm asking for them as well. So they could just be kind of described how that is compatible with conservation conveyance. Just like to hear it described because there's a lot of documents out there, and it's hard to connect the dots for me. It would be helpful.
Yeah, and I can definitely, you know, I want to touch on what Kathleen said too. I think we use the word uses, and there's a long-term use that's, that's whatever council decides about the property after the cleanup. There's use that's allowed with the deed. There's uses that are allowed on the, the shooting range is one of the uses that are. So I just want to be careful when we use the word uses, that we're being clear about which section and which area that we're talking about. And then the second piece, I will say, Counselor Little, is I can bring back the, what FBI has paid so far with their agreement. And I just want to say too, is a lot of this stuff originated in the 90s and the 2000s, and we're cleaning up a lot of the, the contracts and various things that have went on. And our, our PA that's sitting in the audience right now has been a great help with us working through those processes. So I will just, I'll bring all that back next week, Counselor Little, and I'll bring the bullet points back about the cost and then the shooting range. And the conservation conveyance is also a word that's thrown out there often. So I just want to make sure we're talking all about the same thing.
Great, thanks for that clarification. And the, the longer term uses for it as a park, there's a whole process that will be underway.
Full process. And as Kathleen said, that's council's decision. The staff is concerned, our direction and my direction with the staff is the agreements, the cleanup, and we're partnering with Ecology, all the different areas that we're working on. And not, we're trying not to get, go back to 1994 and some of the conversations that we've had.
We're saving that for land use planning.
Exactly.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Chair, so I heard you mentioned four entities. I think I only called three, FBI, ATF, sheriff, and what's the fourth one?
It's the metros. You're going to, you're going to ask me that, and I'm not going to.
The bomb squad?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And that was the one that we included in the memo that we, we sent to council that we had learned about a couple weeks ago with the incident. So thank you for, so that's part of that conversation. And that's the one we've asked to pause. Use. Yes.
Great, good. Any further comments or questions? Thanks for your discussion on this. And we'll look forward to hearing more next week. Okay, any other Counselor Reports at the moment? Okay, work session requests.
None today.
Okay, policy updates. Go ahead, Jordan.
Hello, council. For the record, Jordan Bogie, I have a few updates for you today. And so the first one is coming back to you with a letter for our legislative delegation related to the document recording fee shortfall that we discussed last week. I have gotten some information from our team in Community Services. So I appreciate them for providing some of this data. But I have drafted this letter for a legislative delegation that I'd be looking to see if council supports. And that basically would request that the state continue to backfill the document recording fee shortfall. As you'll recall, there is, the state levies a document recording fee on all real estate transactions in the state, and a portion of that goes to fund housing and homeless services across the state. And currently, the way that the budget is looking and the way that the shortfall is because of the fewer number of real estate transactions that are going on, it looks like over the next biennium that we will see as a county about a $7 million shortfall in, in funding that we otherwise would have received, which is a 22% deficit in the county's current budget for homeless services, which is the equivalent essentially of having to remove 94 shelter beds as well as rental and housing assistance that the county provides currently to an additional 200 households. I have also included in this letter a request for the state to not reduce current levels of funding as well. So there's kind of two issues at play here. There's the document recording fee shortfall, which is something that we've been dealing with for the last few years. And then we have also been advised that the Department of Commerce is looking at potentially as much as a 20% cut in current state funding for local homelessness programs. And so that would mean an additional $2.4 million taken away from county programs. And so I've included in this letter a request that the state continue to fund programming at the same level that they currently are so that our community services folks and the associated providers that they support can continue to do the work that they do. And so I'd happily take any questions or look to see if council gives a thumbs up to this letter to send to our state delegation.
Council, I see four thumbs up, so unanimous. And I just mentioned that this will also be shared with the Echo Committee, and we'll be encouraging them to send letters to the legislature as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, that's correct. I have drafted another version of this letter that other jurisdictions will be able to send in if they wish. So we'll be bringing that up next week at Echo. So a few more updates for you today. Just wanted to give a quick update on Dabler. I think I've sent some of these materials to council already via email, but just wanted to let folks know for the public records. So the Dabler sale was not paused. Commissioner of Public Lands up the Grove did pause 23 sales across the state. Dabler was not one of them. And the auction for the Dabler parcel was held last week. The auction results happened. It sold for about $5.2 million. And it is being challenged in court. So that will happen at the state level. And so potentially more to, more to come. But just wanted to give, give you all and the public an update on where we're at with, with Dabler. And I see, Counselor Little?
Counselor Little?
Did, thank you. Did we get a response from them about the conversation that we'd like to have with them?
So I did get a response from DNR that they are willing to have a work session and meet with council to talk about the timber sale and timber management in Clark County and how the council can, can work with DNR around land use and forest land issues. And I am currently working with them to identify some dates as well as some times on our end that we could get a work session scheduled. So that is in progress. We're working with DNR on that.
Okay, I would just want to add to that, that we would like to have that conversation before any cutting starts.
And I'm hopeful. I reached out to them right away, so I'm, I'm hoping we can get some dates put together.
And I understand there's litigation. And do we know what kind of a pause that creates in the system? How long that is?
I am uncertain of what that means for cutting or the timelines there. But I can, I can do some digging and see if I can find what that might mean.
Great. Any other questions? Thanks for that update. Do you have more?
I do. I have a couple more updates for you. So I had the privilege of attending a National Association of Counties webinar last week related to the federal government and the new administration's executive order, or orders, I should say, related to immigration. And I just wanted to give council kind of a high-level overview of what I learned there. I'm happy to share the, the link with, with council if you'd like. It was a really interesting and informative webinar. I know at least, I think the chair attended and maybe someone else. But really, just to, to give you a high level, the executive orders as they're written in some ways are a little bit of business as, as usual in terms of the, the federal government. There's some strong language in there. And the acting attorney general is, is writing and making clear that there is an effort to push counties toward an affirmative obligation of supporting the federal government in its role of doing immigration enforcement. But it is also clear in federal law that the federal government is the entity in our system of federalism that, that sets immigration policies, that enforces immigration policies. There is some, a body of case law that, you know, basically says that you can't force local governments to carry out a federal function. And so at least as the legal landscape sort of stands right now, if counties are not actively opposing the federal government in terms of activities that would be obstructing their work, should legally be in, in the clear, but we are not required to do the federal government's work for them essentially at the present time. There also was some conversation about, because this was a National Association of Counties webinar, making sure that we defer to state law in Washington, which I am not an expert on Washington's immigration-related laws. And so we, I can look into that more if that's of interest to council. But, but just also say that we need to make sure that we're following our obligations under state law as well as we, as we think about where, where this is all moving. And so this is a bit of an unsettled area, but that's, that's kind of the update for right now. It's also possible because the Lake and Riley Act and some other things are happening at the federal level. We, local governments are likely to get contacted by Immigrations and ICE because they do not have the manpower or capacity to physically detain all the people that they say that they want to detain. And so it's likely that they will be trying to engage local governments in those efforts. And so that is probably something that will be coming down the pipe at, at some point. But I just wanted to give a, just kind of a brief overview of what I learned there in case it, it comes up for us.
Counselor Little?
Yeah, thank you. I'm sure it will come up. For the public, and so I understand better, do we have a policy or stance at the county level or sheriff level? Also, I'm curious what level makes these decisions about similar decisions that so-called sanctuary cities have made? Just curious what our current position is at the county level.
I'm looking to Amber for that one.
So Counselor Little, like Jordan said, there's state law that governs what happens with the jail. There's administrative functions that are around a detainer that is at a federal level. But then is it signed by a magistrate or a judge? That's what's at the state level with the conversation around immigration. We have policies through the jail about what that means with a detainer if they're, if they show up at our facility. And I'm happy to share those with council, what the policy is. The sheriff also works underneath the state law as that's the area that we go with. And then I will just mention the other component that's often impacted is the courts. And the judiciary has a different area, like if they, because it is a public space, but is there arrests allowed in the courtroom? And I know that the courts are working on that particular policy locally and that they'll be getting back to Kathleen and I with what their policy is going to be for the judiciary, which is a separate branch of government, as you guys know.
I think this would be a good topic to bring to Law and Justice.
Agree.
To just hear the roundtable of what people are thinking.
It's going to impact everybody a little bit differently, but again, we follow what our state regulations or state laws are, are instructing us to do.
Great. Counselor?
You mentioned that you'd be able to share the jail's policy. If you can do that briefly, that'd be great.
Absolutely. And I have that handy somewhere in my email, so I'll forward that all along and include Chris on there as well.
Thank you.
And I know there's a good deal of fear and uncertainty in the community. And in as much as we can make available what people's rights are, I would encourage us to do that.
Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I would also just kind of add and confirm, really essentially the jail is the only thing that we would have any kind of a policy that would be applicable to this. Because the sheriff... applicable to this. Because the sheriff controls the sheriff's office. The prosecuting attorney controls the, the entire, that entire system. So we don't have any authority over those decisions, but the jail we do. Am I correct?
That's, that's correct. I mean, we're still underneath the state law requirements for the jail, of course, but you're right, those are independent elected officials, but there's also that they follow the constitution as well for the, the state of Washington. So that is, you know, really our governing, you know, body, but our, our jail policies are written around those particular things and also a couple court decisions that are also relevant to that as well. So all, that's all included in the policy that I'll be passing along to all of you.
Thank you.
In as much as people are coming to our public space, there could be some interactions there that would be good to know how to handle that. And I know the governor has set up that special program for children that may be separated from their parents. So it'd be good to know what resources are available here locally in Clark County.
And I heard Kathleen, I think,'s voice as well.
Go ahead, Kathleen.
No, I, I was just going to add on to Counselor Young's comments about policy and separate electeds. And it's, it's kind of a weird one, but your policy, your only policy impact is budget with regards to separate electeds. But even if you were to impact that, they still are going to set how that's going to be spent. So I just wanted to make that, that is a policy, official policy also for our council.
Thank you. Any other comments on this topic? Okay, we'll wait to see more information, I guess, in the future. Jordan, do you have more information for us?
I have a few more things. The next set of updates is going to be related to the state legislature and a handful of bills in our process for, for that. And so the, the first thing I'd like to ask council right now is, I had gotten a request. I know Counselor Little has a standing issue with our 10:00 AM Monday legislative update meetings that we have with our lobbyists. And so we'd just like to take council's temperature slash availability on potentially moving to 11:00 AM on Mondays for the legislative update. I know, I think I got a response from Counselor Young that said he had a intermittent conflict. So we may not have a, a perfect time, but I just wanted to, to raise that since Counselor Little does have that standing issue.
Go ahead.
11:00 AM works for me.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I will have a conflict every other week with that. So I don't know. I mean, that was the first proposal that was given. Is there a different time that we might be able to consider? Where none of us would miss it?
Is that an hour conflict? 11:30 would work. 9:30 would work sometimes. I know it's busy for all of us, but is, is counselor at 10:00? Is it an hour conflict at 11:00? Sorry.
Yeah, the conflict, my conflict is, is at 11:00. So we're currently doing it at 10:00. I mean, I think nine would be fine for me. I don't know if that's everybody else's or not. If we can't figure out a time, then, you know, even though I would love to be at every single one of them, I think it is important that if one counselor can't make any, I would rather make the sacrifice that I miss half of them than he miss all of them.
Okay.
And Jordan.
We should check with our lobbyist, because I think they have a series of meetings and people that are briefing their other clients. So I think it would be contingent on that. I can be flexible. I have a standing meeting with Kathleen, but it's not embedded in my calendar yet, so I think we can work that out. So, so I think Jordan, perhaps check with Josh and report back on that and see if there's an earlier time that could work. Would an earlier time, would that solve it for for that, for you, Counselor Little and Counselor Young?
Earlier would work for me, yes.
I have less conflicts at nine, but it would be once a month, probably about.
And we, and Chair, we also have a monthly 9:00 AM as well with one of our community groups at night. But Jordan, I don't know, did they already provide their availability for Monday? Were those the only two times?
I can check again. I had really just confirmed with them that 11:00 would work. I know they also have a 10:30 and I think they have a 9:30 as well. I'm not sure about a 9:00 AM. So I, I could ask about that, but I know, I know they do have a series of, of meetings with some of their clients on those days, so.
I, I think, Jordan, if you could be the point person to figure this all out, that would be great.
Perfect. Well, I will ask.
Go ahead, Counselor Little.
And sorry, if it doesn't work, I, I can still probably make about half of those meetings at 10:00. So keep that in mind, please. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, counsel. So just a handful of bills to run by you and see if counsel is interested in supporting slash some updates. So first is an update on House Bill 1158. And so that is, if you'll remember, the bill that would move developmental disability, community inclusion services from a local process to the, the state level. And just to give you an update, it was scheduled for an executive session on Friday. The bill has been removed from executive session and so it could come back, but at this point, that is a positive sign for this bill that council has opposed not moving forward. And so we'll continue to keep an eye on that, but just wanted to, to give council a quick update on that. The deadline that the bill would have to move out of the policy committee by is February 21st. So if it doesn't get rescheduled and moved forward by the 21st, we can pretty safely say that it is, it is dead. Some bills do come back, but most of the time that is the cutoff. And then the next update I have is a question whether counsel would be interested in supporting Senate Bill 5043, 5043. And this is a bill that is concerning industrial insurance coverage for post-traumatic stress disorders affecting correctional facility workers. So to give you a little bit of background, there is an LNI rule that claims based on mental conditions or mental disabilities caused by stress do not fall within the definition of occupational disease for workers' compensation programs. There are a few exceptions to this, including nurses, some firefighters and law enforcement. They have exceptions because based on the things that they have to see and deal with in their roles, post-traumatic stress disorder is a, an occupational disease or hazard for them. Currently, there is no such presumption that PTSD is a, is a condition that's work-related for corrections officers. And so this bill seeks to extend those same the same coverage ability for PTSD for workers' comp that those other occupations have to correctional officers. And so I know we've done, the council has done a lot of work to support our jail and our corrections staff. And so when I saw that this was getting a hearing on Friday, I thought that I would bring this forward to council just to see if this was something we were interested in supporting, given that our corrections officers are often doing work that can be traumatizing in a, in a similar way that impacts other law enforcement folks.
I'm looking for thumbs up. Oh, go ahead. Make a comment.
Question real quick. My initial thought is yes, absolutely, but I am curious. You know, when you add coverage, the insurance rates increase. And so what I'm wondering is what the financial impact would be to both the county and also to the employees that would benefit from it. I don't know if there's any way for us to gather that information and also have we communicated maybe with the, with the guild to see if there's a level of support there as well. I would assume it would be supportive, but I, I'm just curious.
Jordan, do you want to touch on the first part if you have any more information on that?
Yeah, so on, on the fiscal note, there has been a request for a fiscal note on this bill. There is not a fiscal note yet. But as soon as I see one, I'd be happy to, to share that with council. And Amber, I don't know if you've talked to the guild at all about this bill.
I haven't because it's, I just noticed it last week as well. I know that when we had the conversation with Congresswoman Perez, when we had the roundtable, we had staff from every level of the department. This officer wellness piece came up in every single conversation that we had from the staff talking about, you know, life expectancy after retirement, folks hanging on to retirement and the, sometimes the benefits not extended to corrections officers that are given to law enforcement when they oftentimes are in a locked facility all day and can't get out to, you know, go get a coffee like a law enforcement officer can. It's a, a large impact. So we, I'm happy to work with HR and reach out through the, to the guild about the bill if that's what we would like to do, but we haven't yet, but I would assume that it would be a positive piece.
And, and I don't know if that financial aspect is borne by the entire pool or just that job classification.
I'm not sure based on the fiscal impact note, and I think I heard Kathleen again, fiscal impact note. Yeah, go ahead.
And so, Jordan, just to clarify, it's for, for after they leave, right? It's a benefit. It's a qualified medical condition in which they can medically separate from the county. So normally what that is, is there's a process that could take a few months. So that would be the major impact, financial impact for the county is covering those positions as the evaluation and process moves forward. And then I think the longer term impact, it's based on their, like, social security and medical benefits through that lens versus the county side, but we can, it is new, it was new probably five years ago with law enforcement and firefighters. It's, it's a fairly new bill. And we've, I think I've only know maybe of one or two people who have used that while they were employed and left employment earlier than their retirement date due to this medical condition that, that they get from what they see. So, but we can certainly look to see if there's any other costs, but it's more about state cost for medically separating from, so that they can retire early and leave the, like a disability type of benefit.
Great. I, I would be supportive of the bill even pending getting more information, well, not pending getting more information. I think the fiscal note will be determined at some point, but there's a looming deadline to move bills forward. So I think this, this is a matter of fairness, I think, for correctional officers.
Sure. I'll, I'll throw in that support as well. I would be interested in seeing that, that financial impact information eventually, but
Absolutely.
they certainly are, that is certainly a need that I think that should be provided.
Okay, so I've, I've seen four thumbs up. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. I will, I'll, I'll reach out to Josh and ask them to sign in for the hearing this Friday and support. And as we get more information, I'll be sure to share that with you. And then the final item I wanted to follow up with you. So on Monday, as you'll recall, we talked with our lobbyists about Senate Bill 5587. And this is a bill that Senator Cleveland is sponsoring. And this is the bill that would make counties responsible for meeting targets between housing need levels that are determined. So the University of Washington's Housing Research Center every two years has to put together a report on how well the state and individual counties are doing in meeting the identified level of housing need across the state. And this bill would basically make it so that that counties need to, it need to meet, basically they need to meet the level of housing need that is identified in that report. So the state says, okay, Clark County, you got to build X number of housing units. If we don't build those units, there is basically, I don't know if it's exactly like a penalty, but it's it essentially, they're, they're, they're looking into, and it looks like as the bill is getting developed, there's going to be some kind of penalties for counties that don't meet what is built or developed. And so I had a chance to follow up with our planning staff and development folks. And their concern with this bill is that the county really doesn't have a lot of control over what's built and developed. The council can set different zoning targets, but there are a lot of other factors that go into whether or not housing gets developed. And so based on that staff feedback, I would recommend that, that council consider potentially either not supporting or opposing this, this bill, because essentially the state is looking to hold the county to a standard that the county doesn't have control over. You know, we could give some feedback. I talked a little bit with, with April and a potentially a, a better metric might be, you know, how many of the kind of desired policy outcomes that the state is looking for related to housing are we implementing? You know, in terms of regulatory or zoning practices and Clark County, you know, we, we have been pretty forward-thinking in terms of the council implementing the housing option study and the, the activities there. And then there's also a piece to this bill that requires if we don't meet the, the need here, that essentially all affordable housing development needs to go into the front of the queue for all permitting timelines and that basically the, the county can't restrict any development that keeps affordability for a period of 25 years. And there's some questions about how that would get administered in terms of maintaining those covenants. And so it's, it's a little bit of a complicated bill. And I know that our lobbyists had asked if, if council was interested in supporting the bill. But based on staff feedback, it doesn't seem like it's a great fit for the, the county. So I'm happy to, to answer any, any questions and, and see where council's thoughts are based on that information.
Counselor Fuentes, did you have a question?
No, well, I get the intent of a bill. It makes sense, right? Holding counties accountable for not meeting the housing needs of their community, but as it is, we're, we're behind. And so I, I, so I, I guess I, I don't see myself supporting this bill as it stands, and we don't even know what the consequences are.
Counselor Little.
Yeah, a couple of questions. So do we know any of the motivations for Senator, the Senator Cleveland's bill, whether there's any motivations from our county and the experience in our county? And then is there a position from WASAC, the county association? And do we know what other counties are doing? Can we be neutral?
So I'm not sure about Senator Cleveland's motivations. I'm sure it's related to wanting to make sure that the, you know, the state is meeting its, its targeted goals around housing production. But outside of that, I'm not sure if it's related to anything particular to Clark County. Let me take a look. I don't know that WASAC has taken a position on this bill as of yet. Looking at some of my notes here from the last WASAC legislative update meeting.
Counselor Young has a question.
While, while you're looking, is this our Senator Cleveland that we're talking about that introduced the bill?
That is correct.
Could we invite her to come and, and talk with us about it?
We certainly could. It, it may be difficult to get her during the session, but.
I understand, but at least extend that invitation for sure. Especially if we're considering support or non-support, I think we ought to have that level of communication directly with her.
I, I would suggest this would be a good one to just be neutral on at this point. It sounds like it's a bill that's still being worked on, maybe a new concept. Not a bad idea to keep a focus on affordable housing for all of the counties. Some are doing better than others. Penalties would be a concern, but I, I'd suggest, let's, let's see how this evolves.
Okay.
I agree with Chair Marshall about maintaining neutrality.
And I think part of this too is the communication of, you know, if, if we express to her the, the issues and the problems, the challenges that we see with it, it may be an opportunity. the issues and the problems, the challenges that we see with it, it it may be an opportunity for amendment down the road and things of that nature.
Good idea.
Thank you, counsel. I will give that feedback to our lobbyists and Senator Cleveland and uh reach out to see if she would be interested in coming to to talk to counsel to give a little bit more information.
Okay.
That was the the final bill update I had for you, so that's uh that's it for policy items today for me. Thank you.
Okay.
Sure, I have just one question for Jordan before we move on. And this was brought up during our discussion today, popped back into my head. I I remember, unless I'm got some phantom memory here, uh and I can't remember where, but I remember discussing a bill that was being considered that would address kind of the issue that we're at with our current non-compliance, GMA non-compliance situation in terms of when the the growth or the Growth Management Board makes a decision and then there's an appeal. I remember quickly discussing that, but I don't know what what's happened with that. Do we know? Or is it gone?
I am not sure. I do recall the bill you were talking about that was changing how appeals to the Growth Management Board uh work. I have not seen that pop back up. Let me do uh a little bit more research here and I'll uh shoot an email to counsel with uh what I find on the update there.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other policy discussion? Okay, uh let's move on. We'll be uh moving into exec, an executive session. Uh we have four items, 9.1 collective bargaining for 10 minutes, no after action. 9.2 potential litigation, RCW 42.30.110 uh paren, one paren little I for 15 minutes. Uh and uh then 9.3 same RCW for 15 minutes. Was this one possible after action?
One of the 15 minutes has a poss, potential after action. One does not.
Okay, I think the first one does. And then the second one, 9.4 pending litigation for 15 minutes, no after action.
Chair, 9.3 is after action according to my notes, and then 9.4 is no after action.
Okay, great. We're apathetic here. All right, so we will reconvene uh following the executive session.
Hello, uh the chair has asked us to announce that the executive session will be extended for an additional 30 minutes and open session will reconvene at 3:15. Thank you.
Okay, the council is reconvened from our executive session. Are there any motions?
Yes. I move to approve the request that Clark County provided for the defense and indemnification of the individually named defendant in the matter of Denise uh Sahura versus County of Clark, Deputy Jonathan Fuller, individually and as an employee of County of Clark.
There a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion approved, and without objection, this meeting is adjourned.